We've got 10 o'clock. We will call this meeting to order and I will just make sure that everybody knows who is here. Lisa, if you would just do a quick roll call. So we'll have, who's available or who's with us?
Alderman, Alderman Carver. Alderman Sistrung.
Here.
Alderman Little.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Park.
And we know the Vice Mayor's not joining us. Okay, well, this is our work session of May the 29th in preparation for our board meeting of June the 2nd. So that'll be our first meeting in June. And we will be allowing Mr. Kimp, the junior, to provide us with capital improvement project overview. So if you want to do that, Edward, now be the, now be the time.
Okay. I have a very quick PowerPoint slide because I knew someone would be joining us. I also have a handout, but I've included that information on the, on the slides. Just wanted to give a very brief overview of our street improvement program. We are slightly delayed this year, but that is based on some of the feedback that I've received from some of the asphalt companies on the amount of workload that they're experiencing right now. So we, we've decided to push and delay ours just a little bit. Ordinarily, we would be doing overlays or overlay about this time of the year, but what we're looking at right now is doing it in July, August timeframe. And I think that's going to work out really well from a production standpoint. We're going to also, I think, receive some very competitive prices by doing that. So what I wanted to do today is just give an overview of the program, tell you a little bit about what we've done in the past, what I'm looking at doing in the future, and then go over the individual roadway listing for, or what I'm recommending for this, this year, and also provide an opportunity for any feedback or, or questions on that. So Joel, give them the next slide. Just a recap of what we've done the last couple of years. If you remember, as part of the bond program, we allocated a million dollars per year for four years, and we established a prioritized road plan that outlined four years where the priorities, but, and also a, a large group of streets in addition to that, that we kind of just threw all into a secondary, or I guess a priority five grouping at the end. We did 5.3 miles in 2018. We did a little less than that last year. That's a little bit deceiving because we did, some of that was included in the Lynn Lane widening project. So give or take, worth a million dollars will get us about five miles where the overlays is kind of a good rule of thumb for what we do here in Starville. Like I said, the, the funding is a million dollars per year for four years. And also just wanted to update the board. I think I mentioned this in a previous meeting, that I am working on an update to that four-year plan because we are nearing the end of that. And as you can imagine, with any plan that you build several years out, there's a lot of things that come up. And you'll see some of those things that I want to talk a little bit about today. It's very hard to predict how a road will perform multiple years out. For the most part, we got it pretty close and, and very close to being right. But obviously, there's some are streets that deteriorate quicker than others. There's things that occur such as a, a potential, or the new utility improvement up in Green Oaks that was not even considered three or four years ago. So things like that cause the plan to change. And so I think it's good to have a long-term plan, just from a, to, to have a plan to follow the plan, also give expectations to all the constituents that the road is on the list. But also, I think it's good to have some flexibility with that list as things do change. So just wanted to go through the, the listing right now. I think that's the next slide. And this is the handout that I gave to the, to the members here present. This, this list is, for the most part, very, very similar or the same as what was initially approved by the board three years ago in the, in the four-year plan. The only changes I've tried to highlight in red are kind of located at the bottom. And I'd like to just spend a moment to go through those if I could, just in full transparency, just so I could let the board know about the rationale of some of these roads. Changing, like I said, a couple of those streets that are at the very bottom that are, aren't highlighted red, those are streets that initially were in the priority three listing, but it moved for a couple of different reasons. And I'd like to go through those really quickly. I mentioned the utility, the proposed utility improvement project up in Green Oaks, looking like that's going to kick off very soon. And hopefully, by this time next year, we will be out of that area and not be doing any type of work that's going to conflict with any of the pavement work. And so we decided are recommending to delay Mangrove Palm and Spruce for that reason. Those were initially included in priority three. The other one due to construction is Ward Drive. There's a proposed development that's, that has been proposed and has been approved at the corner of Scales in Louisville and also is on Ward Drive. The primary construction access and primary access for that development is going to be off of Ward Drive. So we're recommending to hold off on that section of overlay until that develops, development is a little bit more substantially completed. I will say on that development, they did a lot of work initially clearing and doing some, some earthwork. And there's been a little bit of a lull in activity. So I'm going to check in with the developer on that to make sure that that plan is still imminent. And if so, I would, am recommending that to delay one year. If not, we obviously can go ahead and include that in this year's roadway. The next two, Colonial Circle and Grand Ridge, are, I would say, two roadways that have, that have performed, I guess, a little bit better than I anticipated. Those, when I put this list together several years ago, is roadways that I thought that would be, you know, ripe for improvement or maintenance at this point. And not to say that they aren't, but they have held up a lot better than I thought that they would. So I'm recommending on those two to actually replace those with some streets that in my opinion are in much worse condition, that are in the same general area of, of those as well, that are deteriorating much faster. So that leads me to move up to the areas that are highlighted there. Dunlap and Kirkside are two roads in the Timbercoast neighborhood that are, in my opinion, deteriorating very, very quickly and need some immediate attention. Those were initially included in priority four roadways. So I'm recommending to, to go ahead and, and complete those and replace those with the, with the Grand Ridge that was initially here and New Grand Ridge down. Tablewood is a roadway at the end of Edgewood. If you know where that is, it's a very short segment of road, not very long at all. That roadway is intended, was intended to be completed next year. And since Edgewood Road right now is, is on this year's list, I didn't think it was a good idea to have all the construction traffic and the asphalt trucks hauling down Edgewood next year, if we could just go ahead and knock it out this year. It's a very small cost. So that's the, that's the rationale behind that one. And then Country Club Road is another example of what our roadway that I consider is deteriorating much quicker than I thought we have done. If you go down there, it looks a little bit like a patchwork quilt because we've done so many repairs and pothole replacements and things like that. So I'm recommending to go ahead and, and improve Country Club Road in lieu of Colonial Circle there. The last thing that I'm recommending to the board is to add an allowance into this year's budget to restripe some existing, what I'm considering, primary roadways. Those are going to be your major collector-type roadways where you're getting a lot of traffic. But yet, those roadways are not in a, in a state where they really need to be overlaid, but the striping on the roadway has faded so much that it's not visible. An example of that would be like the southern end of Industrial Park Road. I believe Spring Street is another one that I, that I noticed, maybe Avenue of Patriots. These are some of the major roadways where the striping is either nonexistent or is so faded you can't see it. So just to have a little bit of allowance in that to, just from a safety standpoint, to, to increase that while also trying to wait a little bit longer on overlaying those streets. So as you can see, all in all, the, the roadway listing is pretty much the same. We are hitting right at a million dollar budget, as you can see on the, on the slide there. And there, I guess at this point, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or, or inquiries about the list.
Okay. Well, we'll go around each ward. I've got, just real quickly, in restriping the primary roadways, you, do you have a list of that? Or are you just waiting to develop a list?
I'll, I'll be developing a list and using that $25,000 as a, as kind of our budget for that, if the board's available to do that. Those were the first, I, let me, let me also back up and say, I have started riding, and I've done this, I've pretty much completed looking at every street in the city. And that was one of the things that I noticed is that this roadway really, it's in pretty good shape, but the striping isn't so bad. So I, I do have a kind of a running list of that. And I would prioritize that if the board is okay to this idea of having that striping budget, let you know that.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go around the wards. Alderman Carver, have you come in at all? So Alderman Sistrung, any questions of Mr. Kimp?
No, thank you.
All right. Alderman Little, any questions?
No, thank you, Edward, for that update.
Right. Alderman Walker, any questions? Couple of those streets are in your ward, I think, that have been changed out a little bit. Any questions of Mr. Kimp?
No, ma'am. I agree with those changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Kimp, what are these two inch overlay we're doing? What, what's that?
Typically, inch and a half.
Inch and a half?
Yes, sir.
And no milling required on any of these streets yet? I mean, at some point in time, we're going to get enough asphalt without the mill.
Yes, sir. Milling is included in a lot of these streets. We're doing those on an individual case-by-case basis. Milling, as you know, will add anywhere from 30% to 40% to the cost. And so our strategy on that is we typically will overlay a street a couple of times before we'll mill it down. But obviously, you don't want the asphalt edge getting so high on the edge, it becomes a trip hazard or roll your ankle when you're out walking. Then also from a access standpoint, getting in and out of driveways. So we try to find that balance on, on making our dollars stretch as much, as much as we can. But on this particular street, that's something I have, me and my staff have been working on the last several weeks, is going out and riding each of these roads and identifying those. A lot of the streets that are on this list are going to require milling this year.
You talk about favorable waiting to, that last part is some favorable, potentially favorable, cost savings or cost of asphalt stuff. How much, let's say, this summer, or last summer, this summer, based on drive to patrol? I know asphalt companies buy head or lock in their price ahead so they know what the price of asphalt will be, so they know what charge comes, that kind of thing. How, how much are we looking at in potential savings over?
I don't think it's going to be huge savings. I think what we are avoiding is bidding out projects at the same time that other bulk of projects are bidding. So you've got to get this, these contractors saying, yeah, we could do that, but we're going to charge a little bit of a premium if we do get it. Interesting about asphalt, this is a little bit of a dive, but one of the principal ingredients in asphalt is liquid AC. That's actually a byproduct of the refining process. And believe it or not, liquid AC has not dropped precipitously like oil has, crude oil has, as you've seen over the last month or two. So liquid AC is still holding pretty high. It is dropping some. Obviously, fuel for transportation, transport is dropping some. So long and the short, I think we'll see a 5%, maybe 10% savings potentially. I think there's a lot of variables that go into that, workload, how, how, how heavy that those contractors are with the projects that they have on the deck. If this, if there's some that are hungry, obviously, we'll get much better prices. And that's kind of what I was trying to, the environment I was trying to find with this delay.
One, last question. Crushed limestone aggregate asphalt, is it more expensive?
Yes, it is. Much, much better though.
The inch and a half is that fine vituminous? It's that last coat of a normal street from your building line, right?
Yes, ma'am. It's top surface.
Surface course.
Yeah, the aggregate is smaller, which means the, the surface is smoother. So you have, typically have a base course, then you'll have a surface course.
Closer to top, the smaller the aggregate. But they, I guess they, even if that's gravel, crushed, right?
Yeah. In our area, just due to the river being so nearby, crushed river gravel is, is our typical aggregate. We have to truck in all the limestone aggregate from North Alabama typically, but it is a much, it's, it's a superior mix, I'm sure.
Garrett Road and New Road Cross from, or was going to open the ground. That's, that's crushed limestone, right? The, the New Road was built with sidewalks there.
That's a good question. We built that road, opened that road.
It's holding up nicely. It may very well be crushed.
I think you look at it, after the weather's out, it's great, but the surface grip is great.
I think a big component of that, Alderman, is we have a substantial base underneath that roadway, which obviously is a big indicator on the roadway long-term performance. And I think it's, that's something, that's a good question, because that does determine the performance of a road over time. And that's something that's very hard to know without going out and doing individual mornings to see what's under those roadways. So when we're trying to predict how these roads, where they're going to fall on the overlay schedule, that's the big variable that we don't know. Because some of these neighborhoods, when they were built, were probably in the county, there was not a whole lot of standards. They're very, they're very well could be insufficient base underneath them, which is going to require that maintenance routine to occur much, much more frequently.
Alderman Vaughn, any questions of Mr. Kimp?
How much allowance you want to allow for the restryting of the roadway?
$25,000 is what I, is what I have on there.
It's down at the bottom.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Edward.
Thank you.
And you're going to, you're going to highlight these and have it?
I'm sorry, the highlight didn't show up better, but I'll, I'll give that for the E-pack. It'll make it a little bit more like the pre-division street.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. All right, guys. We'll, we'll move into the agenda items, which again, we are not exactly overwhelmed with a number of things, except for public hearings, interestingly enough. So first couple of items on here are going to be minutes. And Mr. Latimer and, and Ms. Harden, I believe, have come to an agreement of how the minutes are. Do we have any issues with putting both of these on consent? All right. Hearing none, I'm going to, I'm going to set those up for consent. Obviously, our public hearings will not be, will not be part of any consent opportunity, but we, this is the second and final hearing for the amending the development code to extend the grace period for the non-conforming signs. And if you recall, that's one of the things that we were doing, is it relates to an understanding of the difficulty of the small businesses and them having to change at a time when they're struggling a bit with all the closings and that sort of thing. So this kind of pays homage to that, as well as gives us a, one more year of grace period for those folks. But we'll be sending out letters next year to, to remind them we were going to do that this year, but that keeps us from having to do that this year. So we'll be sending out letters next year to remind them. And we'll be, it'll be one of those points of discussion as we go along. And new businesses come in, obviously, they're having to have those monument signs as opposed to pole signs. And we'll continue to bring those signs down. We have, still have a number of them around town that our code enforcement person lets the, the current owners of the business know that they have exceeded their six-month. And it's, as such, those signs need to, those pole signs need to come down. So we're still working through that process. The second is going to be the Unified Development Code to allow for agriculture and forestry operations. And if you recall, this is going to be a little bit of an aberration from our normal two public hearings, which is not mandated. We're only, we have always, well, we have since about 2005, had two public hearings as a part of the opportunity for transparency. And so in this case, one public hearing is the only thing that is required. So this will be an opportunity for us to approve this. It does require a unanimous vote in order for us to have it become effective immediately. And that effective immediately is what's going to help the school district. And that's the goal in the first place, because the school district has a timber contract on this piece of property. And their timber person is in need of getting this done so that he can proceed and not lose the timber market. Apparently, it is fairly volatile. So that's the point of all of this. And while, you know, always welcome or, or willing to help the school district as best we can. So that's what, that's what this one is about. And I'm sure there may be some questions as we go along. So any, any questions about that?
What's it down, 25?
Yes, sir. It's, it's, well, industrial, industrial park area, the 16th section property.
Cross from Emerson.
Right.
To the west.
Yeah. Third is, we have a public hearing on a special exception for a borrow pit at the Rock Hill Road. This is for dirt. And I don't know, Simon, are you up? Dr. Kim, are you up?
Yes, I am here.
Okay. Anything in particular we need to know about this special exception request?
No. We had a discussion with the applicant and the applicant accepted three conditions. Three conditions include the operation hours shall be from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and standard dust control measures with water shall be done, and the truck entering highways, signage shall be utilized. And then third condition was the, the applicant should ensure to utilize all safety measures and be responsible for any incidents and/or accidents that occur in the site. And so everybody accepted it and neighbor didn't actually make any comments about it. So I think it'll be an easy public hearing item.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kim. Any questions about that?
Dr. Kim, just one. Are there any, is any mitigation possible if, if they do this in the summertime? They would, I guess, assuming they do it in the summertime, this summer. If it starts creating dust, is this, are there houses around this that could be affected by the, the, any of the coming and going of?
Yes, that was steps concerned. So we added in the condition that the standard dust control measures with water, water shall be used. So if dust gets too much and the traffic goes too much, then they're going to have to come that dust down with the waters.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Fourth one is a special exception for manufactured home on the east side of Babylon Road. Anything, Dr. Kim, on this one that we need to be alerted to?
No, no. There was no responses from the neighbors. And the state reviewed the area and the area has been occupied by the mobile homes. So I, I believe it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and/or the requirements will be met.
Okay. Thank you. And then last but not least, we have a public hearing in consideration of a variance for the sidewalk requirements for the lot two. If y'all recall, we've looked at this once before. And this is the one that's at the corner of Jackson and 12. It's not the, in front of the, the vets, vet building. It's just at that corner where Petty's BBQ is. So anything in particular about this one, Dr. Kim?
No, there was just a couple of phone calls and asking about more information, but they haven't actually expressed any comments or opinions about it. So I believe it is the easy one too, but we need to wait for the other, the public's turnout at the meeting and make a comment about it. But nothing major so far.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. That will be the, the bulk of our work on Tuesday night. We have next the proclamation of a local emergency. This is that extension, 30-day extension that allows us to continue to be, allows us to continue to receive federal funding as we go through this from, from FEMA. It is pretty much a prerequisite to being eligible for that funding. So I would suggest that that one is, is a consent item. It has been on the past couple of agendas. So unless there's an objection to that. And then under this, next is with the governor continuing to put out executive orders on a fairly regular basis, and they're changing, what we're trying to do is track with what he's doing. So essentially, rescinding the sixth and all the previous resolutions will allow us to just track with what he's doing with our own discretion on how we handle our, our parks, which he also offers in that, in his, each of his resolutions. It's been a part of consideration that goes with that. So this is just kind of cleaning that up and making sure that we are tracking with the governor, which is what we have stated in the past. Mr. Latimer, anything you want to add to that?
No. And I'll just say, and you, you mentioned the language, but it's a little bit different than what you have before you. We're, we're going to change this heading to say consideration of rescinding the sixth and all previous resolutions, just to make sure that the only thing we will have on the books going forward is this proclamation of emergency. But all those other resolutions will go away and the governor's order will control otherwise unless we decide to do something administratively or internally, especially related to the parks, based on manpower and things like that.
Okay. All right. So if there's no disagreement with that, we can do a consent with that one as well. And then the next one, I'm going to let Chris do, well, Chris, I guess, and everybody else who's involved with it. But this is an agreement for the credit card. And we've gone back and forth and back and forth with the credit card people, and they seem not to be willing to budge. So Chris, I'll let you deal with that.
That's correct. I'm going to lead off and Joel will back second on this item. Yeah, we negotiated hard with this vendor to try to take out those provisions that the AG says are prohibited. They are the usual suspects and indemnification, limitation of liability, and disclaimer of otherwise applicable warranties. The vendor's just been resolute that they're not going to take those out. We then tried to attach an addendum to the contract saying, okay, y'all can leave that in your form, but just sign this addendum saying that it doesn't apply to Starville. They said no deal on that. And I hear from Lisa and Joel, this is almost a sole source and that it's exactly what we need and compatible for what we need. So it'll be up to the board to decide whether the benefits of the bargain outweigh the slight risk that these provisions are still in there. Joel?
Right. And so a little history on this. We, we do and have been accepting online and in-person credit card payments for core fines and financial department transactions for some time, for several years through our Tyler Technology software system that runs most of those departments. There's a third-party piece of software, or our service, rather, that sits in there that's an online gateway, a secure credit card gateway, basically. And we've used authorized.net for many years since we first started this. And so Tyler, our software provider, informed us last year that they would no longer support authorized.net and that the only software that they would support is from a company called OpenEdge. So OpenEdge would replace authorized.net as our secure payment gateway, and they securely transmit that financial information for those transactions. So we are a Tyler shop and have been for a decade now. That is our, that is our software. Tyler's informed us that they will only support OpenEdge for those transactions. So we're at a place with this where we essentially are determining whether we're going forward with accepting online of credit card payments and payments through our Tyler software. Now, that's not a, a full stop that, that would, you know, significantly put, put a wrinkle in, in our operations. There are ways around it. It's not elegant, and Lisa would probably not enjoy that because it does not integrate with our current software. It adds a lot of, of manual work in between there. So essentially, it is, like Chris said, it is sole source to do business the way we have been doing it for several years now.
Well, I, I certainly think it's worth the risk because we need to be able to, to function online. So any questions, Alderman Beatty? I see your hand.
So this in certain circumstances would unload or transfer liability from that, the vendor to us?
Not necessarily. It doesn't transfer liability to us. What it does is it precludes us from seeking potentially full damages if we get crossways with this vendor. That's what their limitation of liability says, that their only That's what their limitation of liability says, that they're only going to be liable to the amount of the contract. And there may be a situation where our damages are much more than the amount of the contract, but if we sign this, we'll be capped at the contract price. Secondly, indemnification is probably the most risky one. That's if we do anything. If we act or if we fail to act in a way that causes them liability, we're agreeing to defend them in this lawsuit, in a lawsuit that might resolve for that. And that's kind of a blank check, because you just don't know where that's going. So that's something to think about. And then lastly, the disclaimer of warranties. In a commercial transaction, under the Unified Commercial Code, warranties automatically attached to a deal, warranties of merchantability, warranties for fitness for a particular purpose, they're disclaiming all that. They're saying, we're giving you material saying what our product's going to do. We're saying it's going to do that. We're not saying it's going to do anything other than that, and you guys understand that. So that's what that third one's about.
Okay. But we, do we know how much we take in via credit cards?
Dollar amount, oh, no, I'm not going, but I would say probably court, probably, I'm guessing 70, 75% coming online.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
Especially lately.
Yeah.
And the way it works with Tyler, it posts directly to that defendant's account. It doesn't land somewhere, and then we have to figure out who they're.
Transferred.
Transferred. I think it would eliminate, you know, a chance of some missed postings or some kind of human error.
Again, I think it's, well, what is the downside amount-wise is whatever the cost is or whatever the payment is? I mean, you know, people paying 500 bucks here and 50 bucks there. I would think we could come quickly enough to a resolution or to an understanding if there's an issue before it got out of hand, that we were, we got a liability that exceeded our ability to deal with it?
We catch it early. That's right.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any issues with this? Alderman Vaughn?
What is your recommendation? You want to deal with this every day? We don't, what is your recommendation?
I recommend going with OpenEdge. Tyler is standing behind it as a secure vendor. They have said authorized.net is no longer guaranteed secure from hackers, basically. They trust this company to be a very firm company, from what I understand, from the background of the technical part. As far as business license and everything, I think right now, the way the world is, people want to be able to pay their credit card payments online, and that's the way most people are paying their court and all. Going through the Tyler company, it posts direct, eliminates human error.
Anyone else? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Anyone else? Any questions about it? Okay. Any concerns about putting it on consent or we want to hold off and wait?
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. We'll put it on consent then. I see no shaking heads, so. Okay, under planning, this is the, this is, it's a special event, but it's not a special event in the sense of our traditional special event. This is just so that we can evaluate what we're going to need for having the Fourth of July. And this is fireworks only. This is not vendors, this is not jumpers, this is not anything other than an opportunity for people to perhaps get in their car, ride over to the sportsplex, stay in their car or be in their pickup truck bed or whatever, and coordinate it with the FM station or with our own music and have some fireworks. So just sort of an opportunity for us to feel some sort of sense of a normal July the Fourth. So that's what this is about. So, and I know that special events don't go on consent, but that's to, just to give an explanation of what we're, what we're trying to do. Engineering, this is the street improvement list that Edward just presented. So we will, I'm sure there'll be some further questions about that one. Anybody want to put that one on consent? No?
Sure, Mayor.
Okay. You're good with it? Okay, well, we'll put it on consent. If someone needs to take it off after analyzing it, we can do that. Claims docket, obviously not on consent. Parks, this is a, this is a change order which is to our benefit. It's a $13,000 or $922.19 reduction, which is always a good thing. So I'm thinking that would be an excellent consent opportunity, unless I hear otherwise consent for that one. And this is a, just a cost savings of grading, drainage, and permitting. So I think that's, that's a nice thing for us to see, because usually it goes the other way. And then under utilities, Chris, since Terry is not here, I know this was, this is a pass-through for the most part, but Mr. Beltwood's suspenders over there decided that he thinks it ought to go on the agenda for board approval. I'm just giving Chris a hard time. But if you'd like to share what is your thoughts about?
Sure. This is an agreement between TBA and Starville that allows Starville to give credit for these vendors under coronavirus pandemic that they're going through. And I thought it would be good just to have it on the agenda as a record, authorize Terry to do that and get your consideration and blessing of that. So that's why it's on the agenda.
All right. Any issues with that going on consent? All right, seeing none. Well, that takes us to the end. We don't have anything scheduled for our executive session, and hopefully it will remain that way. Anybody have any questions or thoughts before we adjourn for the day? All right, hearing none, then we will adjourn. I will see everyone on Tuesday and look forward to y'all having a great weekend. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.